Good evening. I would like to call to order the July 13th, 2015 Belbrook City Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sweller?
Here.
And Mayor Baird?
Here.
Formal approval of the executive session and a regular city council meeting minutes of June 8th, 2015. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular city council meeting minutes of the last meeting?
None.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written.
Next, Mayor's announcements. We do have a couple of things and guests this evening. First, I would like to introduce Marty Heidi. She's Congressman Turner's -- out of Congressman Turner's office, and I think a lot of us have seen her around. She gets around and does a very fine job for Congressman.
Thank you.
And please let us know what's going on.
I will. For the record, I'm Marty Heidi, and I'm Green and Pitt County Outreach for Congressman Mike Turner. And right now, I'm making the rounds, kind of talking about constituent services, reminding you what we do in the Dayton District Office. Everybody's familiar with what goes on in Washington D.C. as far as the legislative process, but in Congressman Turner's Dayton District Office, we serve constituents. Right now, we have about 450 open cases of people that need assistance navigating through federal agencies, and we have a full-time Social Security and Medicare specialist. We have a Veterans and Active Duty Military caseworker, and then all the other federal agencies I take care of. And that includes immigration, passports, which I'm going to talk about tonight, IRS, all those other agencies that are out there. So it's a pretty busy office. We get about 60 calls a day, and the reason I'm out to see you is that as you're out and about, you are the next point of contact to people who have issues, who might talk to you about, "I'm having a problem getting my passport," or something like that. You know where to send them to get assistance. This is travel season right now, so I'm bringing information about getting a passport. You can apply through the travel.state.gov website for your DS-11 passport application. Takes four to six weeks. It's a little busy right now, so maybe a little longer to get one directly. If you go to the post office and ask the post office to expedite it, for $60, they will expedite it maybe three weeks, two to three weeks, a little longer maybe, through Congressman Turner's office, because we have a set aside congressional liaison with passport agency. Takes about a week to 10 days, so we can get it pretty quickly. If you're on Jeopardy and you win a trip to Paris or something, we can get you your passport quickly. International travel, you need a passport. International travel includes driving to Canada. You can no longer go to Canada with a driver's license or a birth certificate. You have to have a passport. There is a less expensive passport card that looks like a credit card, and a lot of truckers and people that go back and forth over the border between Mexico and the United States and Canada get these cards. They're less expensive, but they are not for flying. They're not for air travel. They're only for driving. I brought a brochure from the passport agency with information. If you're traveling overseas, I caution you to be sure to go onto the website to check to see what travel alerts there are out there to the destination you're going. Sign up for the Smart Traveler Enrollment Program or the STEP Program, and make sure that you have insurance that covers you overseas. Medicare does not cover people traveling overseas, and we've had some pretty serious issues where people had to be med-packed back to the United States at a bill of about $40,000 that insurance didn't cover. The United States will pay for that, but then they get the bill from the United States. So just be really cautious about that little bit of information. I also brought summer travel to Washington, D.C. Congressman Turner has a website where you can go on and get tickets for Library of Congress, the White House, and he does provide constituents with staff-guided tours of the Capitol that are very personal. It's just you and Congressman Turner's staff person in D.C., and he has a couple of them that just give excellent tours. So I urge you to contact us if you're going to D.C. The brochure on the Capitol is just kind of whet your appetite a little bit. It's really a great place to visit. And we have flags, as you know, in the district office that have all been flown over the U.S. Capitol, so we have those available. My district office number is 937-225-2843. And that goes into the office, and anyone can answer questions. Anybody have any questions?
Does anyone on council have any questions? I have one question, and I've been asked this a couple of times. If we have -- if someone is interested in going to West Point or Annapolis?
Call me.
Okay.
I'm the Service Academy Coordinator of Congressman Turner.
All right. That answers the question?
Thank you.
That was easy.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Marty. Next, we have one more guest this evening, Greg Sparks. Greg is probably wearing sort of two hats. He's with the Belbrook Lions Club, but also now is with the Belbrook Bicentennial Celebration Committee, and I think he has jumped in headfirst and is currently now the chairman. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct. I must not have a lot to do right now, because my wife says, "Why are you doing this?"
And for those of you who do not know, 2016 will be Belbrook's 200th anniversary, and we are working with this group who -- I'll let you talk a little bit about the committee and who's on it and what's going on.
Right, and that's why I'm here, because we've already had two committee meetings. I wanted to basically tell the council that you've got a group of folks within the community, different organizations. Two are sitting here, your city manager and Mrs. Middlestutter, who have already attended both of them and helped us out to guide what will be the city celebration for 200 years. I'll basically want to communicate three things right now. Basically, kind of a template of what we're thinking as a layout for the festivities. The establishment of something I actually did several years ago, and it's actually going to help out, and that is the creation of a foundation. That is the Belbrook Sugar Creek Patriotic Celebration Foundation, which will allow 501(c)(3) donations to it in return can execute under this committee, and we've set up a board for that purpose. And the last is that of a little contest we're going to do this fall, but I felt it may be just time to come talk to the city council, get the word out, let you know kind of what we're thinking, and I think the tempo of coming back here is I will try about every other month, try to give you an update of what the committee is working on and thinking, and we'll communicate via email. Real quick, on the template, we've had some discussions early on, some thoughts, but we believe the two anchor festivals of the community seem to be the right timeframe to conduct any festivities called a celebration, with the focus wrapped around that you're celebrating 200 years of Belbrook. So start with Sugar Maple in the April timeframe, and then with the Lions Club Festival in the August timeframe. It might not meet the days that certain individuals marched across and signed documents that made the city, but we found out with some -- historians said somewhere in February and March timeframe, and we were thinking the weather's not the greatest to try to do that. So with that attempt, if you've noticed, a lot of communities locally have been celebrating 200 years, Springboro this year. We think the models that they've led to of how to set up websites and other things are going to help us immensely. One thing, I already got feedback from Springboro, is don't have it on a Fourth of July, you lose the people, because there's so many things going on. So this idea that we've got of the two different festivals seems to resonate with separate events occurring. We're trying to use the organizations that exist now versus trying to create this group of volunteers that do it for a one-time thing. So that's what we're soliciting for help with local community members. The next meeting of that committee is next Monday, July 20th, at 7:00 p.m., right down on the first floor of this building in the community room. And we've been going through and trying to make it just an hour long, but get some important things done. The second topic was about this foundation. We have five identified individuals who serve on the board, Mary Franz, you'll recognize the name, Dwight Bartlett, Chris Hewing, Rick Robertson, and myself. We comprise basically the decision-making board of the foundation with the intent that local donors could provide money to this celebration. Once we get the word out, we'll have electronic means to donate. It is through green -- the foundation is established under green giving, and the administration is fairly easy. That board will make the decisions on then how the expenditures of the funds would go to do things during the festivities to keep in light of the celebration. And the last of the points was that we need a logo. We need to solicit for ideas and do something in the September, October timeframe of soliciting within either the schools or anybody who's innovative that can come up with a logo that we can use to represent the community on their 200th year. So those are the things I want to get started with, and is there any questions at this time for myself or the committee?
Counsel, any questions?
Greg, do we have a way for people to submit logo designs?
We're setting that up right now. About the Lions Club Festival this year is kind of when I wanted to get some of that out to the folks and get those designs going.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much, Greg.
Sure.
Sounds like it's going very well, and it should be an exciting year in 2016.
It is. 30 seconds. Lions Club Festival, August 20th, 21st, 22nd, right down here. Buy your raffle tickets. I think you can -- you have a city council member can attest that it is effective to buy the raffle tickets.
Go ahead and hit your goal.
And then I call for one thing within the community. Lions Club has taken a huge hit this year with a variety of illnesses and other things that are going on with the -- and I'm the guy that's supposed to pretty much get all the adult and student volunteers out there, so I make a plea to you and all the community. We can use some adult volunteers this year, one day, two days, all three days, just to help us out put on the festival, because realize that that festival is completely done with volunteers. It's probably one of the only things. The carnival rides are the only things we concession out. Everything else is done by the Lions Club, but it's only done because we get the help down there. But it's the point that we're finding out we got a lot of illness and other ailments going on this year with members that have always been out there, so this year's going to be a tough year.
And the dates are?
Dates are 20th, 21st, and 22nd. Please note, this is the first festival, I think, ever that has occurred after school has started, the 19th. We had to do that because of the ride, the ability to get the rides this year, and it won't happen next year, but this year is the only year that it will actually occur before or after school starts. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Greg. That is all we have for Mayor's announcements this evening. Public hearings of ordinances, we have one, ordinance number 2015-9. Mr. Sweller?
Yes, Mayor. Ordinance number 2015-9. Ordinance authorizing the city manager slash finance director to submit the tax budget for fiscal year 2016 to the Green County Auditor. The city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that the tax budget for fiscal 2016, as attached heretofore, has been approved, be approved for submission to the Green County Auditor to guarantee the city's eligibility for the allocation of the local government funds in 2016, and Section 2 that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. What follows is about 14 to 15 pages that detail the various fund allocations. The total for our funds included are 2.2 million 991,000, of which 488,000 is inside the 10 mil limitation and 2 million 503,000 outside the 10 million limitation. These are the property tax-supported funds. This is something we do each year, and this is an estimate of what we're going to collect for 2016.
Yes, this is a requirement of the county auditor that we submit this tax budget. We rely on the auditor's numbers for the property taxes, but we'll prepare the rest of the operating budget for 2016 here in the fall, so this is just more of a required step that we have to take, but we need to have a public hearing before we can submit it to the county auditor.
Anyone on council have any questions?
None, Mayor.
This is a public hearing, so if anyone in the audience has any questions, seeing none, I call this public hearing closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2015-9?
Mayor, I'd like to move for the approval of ordinance number 2015-9.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
And roll call.
A motion by Mr. Sweller to approve ordinance number 2015-9, authorizing the city manager finance director to submit the tax budget for fiscal year 2016 to the Green County Auditor, seconded by Mrs. Middlestutter. Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, that's it for public hearings. We have a couple introduction of ordinances this evening. Ordinance number 2015-10. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2015-10, an ordinance amending appropriation, ordinance 2014-10, to adjust the city of Belbrook appropriations to reflect additional costs in some line items and reduce costs in others, whereas the city of Belbrook adopted the 2015 annual budget based on the best information available at the time, and whereas additional costs have or will occur in some line items and reduce costs are projected in other line items, which require the amendment of various appropriation levels. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that the 2015 appropriation levels in several of the funds listed below be amended as follows. In this ordinance lists various funds, the general fund, police fund, fire fund, street fund, state and highway fund, motor vehicle fund, waste collection fund, water fund, capital improvement fund, and then the grand total. Bottom line grand total is that we are under appropriations by $3,910. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced and after the earliest period provided by law.
Yes, this is just setting this for a public hearing at the next meeting, but just to give you an idea, there is a total reduction of 3,910 in appropriations. It's really a combination of things that have gone into that, but the largest items are, number one, we've reduced a significant amount due to the price and the timing of road salt purchases. With the contract we have now, we don't have to buy it all this year. We budgeted to have to buy everything in 2015. Realistically, we will get about 150 tons in the summer, and then we won't buy any again until 2016, so we were able to reduce the budget significantly for that. Fuel prices is another thing that have gone down significantly since the time we prepared the budget, so that has reduced some things. And the one large increase was in the water fund, the water main project that's going on currently. We expanded the scope of the paving to include everything from Franklin all the way up to the North Corporation limit, so that increased that cost, but we had talked about that previously, so now we're amending that appropriation to cover that.
Any questions on council?
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2015-9?
I'll make an ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance number 2015-10.
I'll make a motion and introduce ordinance number 2015-10.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
A motion by Mr. Edwards to introduce ordinance number 2015-10, amending appropriation, ordinance 2014-10, to adjust the city of Belbrook appropriations to reflect additional costs in some line items and reduce costs in others, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, one last introduction of ordinances, ordinance number 2015-11. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. 2015-11, an ordinance amending Chapter 1042 Water of the Belbrook Municipal Code. Whereas the city of Belbrook provides water service to customers in Belbrook in certain areas of Sugar Creek Township, and whereas the Chapter 1042 of the Belbrook Municipal Code specifies the rates, charges, and billing methods for the provision of water to the customers, and whereas the city of Belbrook has reviewed Chapter 1042 of the Municipal Code and desires to modify certain sections. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that the following amendment to Chapter 1042 of the Belbrook Municipal Code be approved with deletions shown by brackets and strike-throughs and additions shown by italics and underlines. What is amended is Section 1042.03, service charges, 1042.04, billing, 1042.10, establishment of water districts within the ordinance. Section 2, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced October 1st, 2015.
Yes, this ordinance again will be set for a public hearing on August 17th. If you recall earlier this year, when we talked about the billing rates that we decided to leave unchanged again for 2015, I mentioned a couple of things related to primarily to irrigation accounts, and what I've tried to do here is address some of those issues. My goal was to do two things. One is, we have historically billed irrigation accounts a monthly minimum year-round, so even in February and March, people are getting a monthly minimum bill on their irrigation meter, which if there's one thing that generated some calls was that, because we get calls, "Why am I getting billed for irrigation in March? I know I haven't used anything." The second thing is, we actually separately invoice the irrigation accounts. So people will get two invoices instead of just one with a combined. So my goal was to change that. I was able to accomplish one, but not the other. So due to computer system limitations, I cannot combine them onto a single bill. There's just no way to do that without major overhauls. It just wasn't worth to do that when, in the relative near future, that's something we're going to look at is to upgrade our financial system, and at which point, obviously, that would be something that we'd want to do, but it just wasn't worth all the effort that we'd have to go through to combine them on a single bill at this point. So people will continue to get a separate bill, but the primary revisions to this are to differentiate between the domestic and commercial uses in the irrigation. So in Section 1042.03, if you have a domestic, your regular water line, if it's commercial use, you'll still continue to get a monthly minimum use. Part of that minimum, that monthly service charge is for the maintenance of the system in a whole. Even if you don't use the first 1,000 gallons, you still, we still have to provide the water, be able to provide the water to you. That will continue pretty much unchanged, and the language in the ordinance, although there's a lot of additions and deletions, that's pretty much what that says. Once you've used the first 1,000 gallons, each 1,000 gallons after that, you'll get charged $3.90 after that, which is the same as what it is today. Where the differentiation comes in, I've added a section about irrigation. They will no longer be charged that monthly minimum charge, but the difference is, they will be charged $4.75 per 1,000 gallons of water, which is higher than for the domestic or commercial use, but they're not going to get charged when they don't use the water. So really, what we're doing here is charging for water usage. So if they, if an irrigation system like this year is not running because there's no need to run irrigation system, you're not going to get charged. But if you do run it in a time of drought and you use a lot of water, you're going to pay more than you would for your regular water bill. So that accomplishes that, so we will only, we are only going to bill for the water that's actually used as it relates to irrigation system. So that was, that's the biggest thing of this. A couple of the other items, there was an entire section in here that allowed council to increase the rates simply by motion of council as opposed to amending the actual code. I've deleted that. That's not something that I'm really comfortable doing. I think it's something that deserves a public hearing to come before you. Yes, it does impact the timing, because that's why this isn't effective till October 1st because of the, it's not effective for 30 days after adoption, but that's something that we can work through, and that's something that we can do. So I've taken out that language. And then there was some language that was in here that actually identified two different water districts, one that was established prior to 1981, one that was after that. I've deleted that language. We've never treated any customers differently that were on the different districts, so we, everyone gets charged the same rate, so I've just deleted that language to eliminate some of the confusion if somebody's reading this and says, "What is District A versus District B?" Because quite honestly, I don't know what the differentiations between the two were, so we can't do anything to that. So those are the major changes to this, and again, this would be to set it for a public hearing at our next council meeting, and then the effective date would not be till October 1st. Just from a billing standpoint, it just makes sense to do it on the first of a month rather than doing it in the middle of the month, just confuses matters.
Questions on council?
Seems like a good simplification.
That's what I'm trying to do.
When you're doing the calculations on cost, is it going to save money or is it a wash?
It's.
Depends upon if it's a hot or cold.
Yes. In a typical year, it should be revenue neutral, that the amount of money that we would get for people that would pay that monthly service charge, but in a year when there's less usage, it will have lesser revenue, but we'll be producing less water also.
Yeah.
So.
And I think the important factor is, and I'm sure everyone on council knows this, is important to have that second meter because you're not paying sewer rates, and the county sewer rates are quite high, so that's why.
Yes, yeah, that's the benefit. And where we see the majority of our irrigation meters are in the newer construction. That's where they're putting those in, when the newer construction is there. Most of the older plat does not have those, but they certainly have the ability to do that, but it's a little more costly to do.
If no further questions, then may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2015-11?
So moved, Mayor.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
A motion by Mr. Martin to, I'm just sorry. A motion by, I was in the wrong. Mr. Martin to introduce ordinance number 2015-11, amending Chapter 1042 Water of the Belbrook Municipal Code, seconded by Mr. Sweller. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, resolutions. We have a few this evening. Resolution 2015-S. Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Resolution number 2015-S, a resolution authorizing the city manager to adjust the pay scales of city positions not covered by the collective bargaining agreement. Whereas the city of Belbrook wishes to adjust the pay scales for city positions which are not covered by the collective bargaining agreement, and whereas the city reviews wage rates for its employees on an annual basis, and whereas the wages of certain employees will fall outside the new pay scales and ranges for certain positions, and the city manager shall have the authority to adjust those specific wages as necessary, including one-time lump sum payments, and whereas the pay scales for elected officials, the clerk of council, and the city manager will not be adjusted, and whereas the city wishes to incorporate the wage provisions into the general personnel policies of the city. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves Section 1 that the city manager is hereby authorized to adjust the wages for certain positions per the attached pay scales and ranges effective August 1st, 2015. Section 2, that the attached pay scales and ranges be approved as presented. Section 3, that the city manager has the authority to adjust the wages of certain employees that fall outside the new pay scales and ranges for their positions as necessary, including one-time lump sum payments. Section 4, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. There's an attachment with several titles and pay ranges, and I believe this is all in accordance with what we've discussed already, which is a 2% increase?
Yes. This, the recommendation is a 2% increase for the full-time, non-union employees. We did have a meeting with the Finance Committee back here in June, reviewed this proposal. Again, this only impacts non-union, so of our 33 full-time employees, this will impact about 16 employees. The other, we have 10 in the police bargaining unit, we have six in the fire bargaining unit, and then myself as the city manager is not included in this. So their scales will be adjusted by 2%, and there are certain people that, based on some actions that we took a couple of years ago where we adjusted scales down, there are still a couple of employees that are above those pay ranges that will remain there. Their pay will remain frozen. They are eligible to receive a lump sum payment, but they're not eligible to get an increase here August 1st. And that's about all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you may have.
And I, and then of course, our clerk of council is not included in that also.
Right. The city manager and the clerk are not included, so it's really primarily.
And neither are we.
Yeah, neither are we, yes.
Questions on council? I know we've talked about this before. I know the Finance Committee has met on it, so.
Mark, I just, one thing you just said, you talked about that we still have a couple of employees that fall outside or above the pay range, and you said they're eligible for lump sum? I'm not sure I know what that means.
When we instituted this a couple of years ago, and then the last time we did last year is, we have employees that fall outside. What we don't want to do is continue to adjust their pay range. If we adjusted their pay by 2%, the range, they would never catch up to the range, but this allows us the ability to recognize the value of the employee by giving them, what we did last year for some of them is give them a 1% out of the 2%, we gave them a one-time lump sum. We gave them a one-time lump sum payment that recognized it, but it didn't impact their base rate.
Doesn't change their pay.
Doesn't change their base rate of pay. So they're, if we impacted their base rate of pay, they would always be keeping ahead of that curve. So eventually what we'll do is, as those people, they'll either come back within the range or they'll retire and not be within the range anymore. So that's really what it, it gives a way to recognize them for their work, but not further complicate the problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, may I have a motion to adopt resolution 2015-S?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
A motion by Mrs. Seager-Lawson to adopt resolution number 2015-S, authorizing the city manager to adjust the pay scale of city positions not covered by collective bargaining agreement, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird.
Yes. Moving on, resolution, resolution 2015-T. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes, Mayor. Resolution number 2015-T, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District for security at home football games. Whereas the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District has requested that the Belbrook Police Department provide police officers in an extra duty capacity at Belbrook High School home football game and whereas the school district agreed to compensate the city for this extra duty and whereas the agreement will be effective for the 2015 home football season. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves, section one, that the city manager is hereby authorized to execute the attached agreement with the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District. Section two, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. This is just something we do every year.
Yes, this is an annual agreement that we execute with the city. We review the compensation rate. The district pays us $115 per officer per night for their service at the football games. Those officers generally are on overtime. They come in extra to do that. But this is an arrangement that we've had for a number of years and would like to continue.
Mark, how many officers do we typically have there?
Depending on the game, it's usually at least two, sometimes three. But it depends on the game, the crowd, things of that nature.
Sometime in the future, does it make sense to add this to the other contract? Or is it just as easy to have two contracts? So we have other contracts for security.
Because they're somewhat different, I just, I've kept them separate. It was just from a little easier to manage that way, not get them confused.
Any other questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt resolution 2015-T?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Greenwood to adopt resolution number 2015-T, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District for security at home football games, seconded by Mr. Martin. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird.
Yes. Moving on, and I didn't even realize the other one was on here. I knew we had two contracts.
And we're there.
We have another resolution this evening, resolution number 2015-U. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Flip my page here.
Did I go too fast for it?
No, I just forgot to flip the paper. Resolution number 215, 2015-U, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District for school security. Whereas the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District has requested that the Belbrook Police Department continue its increased presence at schools within the city limits beyond its normal patrol and whereas the school district agreed to compensate the city for this increased presence and whereas the agreement will be effective for the 2015, 2016 and the 2016, 2017 school years. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves, section one, that the city manager is hereby authorized to execute the attached agreement with the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District. Section two, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, this is an agreement that has been in place since January of 2013. Unfortunately, after the events of Sandy Hook, this is, was actually initiated by the school district. They requested that we have an increased presence at the school during the school day. So we developed a contract and we've had that in place for several years. A couple of the changes to the contract this year were, instead of, in the past, we were tracking specific hours. Our officers were every, every hour that they were up there, they were tracking. We were recording it, then we were billing them based on those hours. What we've done here is gone to a flat rate contract. I think the schools now have a comfort level and certainly with the police chief and that. We have a commitment to provide this service and they are comfortable with the contract price, which is $15,500 for the first year and $15,750 for the second year. That's the other component of this. In the past, this has been an annual contract. We put this in as a two-year contract just because we're, this is something we're committed to and we will continue to be committed to in the future. And we think that's a fair compensation. During the school day, the schools are, you know, the biggest asset that we have. That's where the majority of the people are within this community. That's the, since we don't have a large work environment, that's where the people are. That's where we're going to spend our time anyway. So I think it's a value for, certainly for the school district, but it's also where we need to be during the day.
Any questions from council?
Mark, I'm sorry, one quick one. Looking over the contract and it talks about the cost of service as you just outlined being a flat rate. It also says the district may request additional officers or assignment times if necessary. Has there been discussion on kind of what that means or what that might look like?
That's been in there all along, but I suppose if they needed it, it would be similar to probably what we just talked about with the football games. I mean, if they had some type of event or if they had some type of specific incident that maybe they needed some type of threat or something, then they could contact us. I mean, we have our limitations and the amount of personnel we have, but we would certainly respond to the best of our abilities if they did request that.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt resolution 2015-U?
Yes, Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number 2015-U.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
A motion by Mrs. Mittelstetter to adopt resolution number 2015-U, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District for school security. Mrs. Mittelstetter, I'm sorry, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird.
Yes. Moving on, two more to go. Resolution, resolution 2015-V. Mr. Sweller?
Yes, Mayor. Resolution number 2015-V, a resolution ratifying the action of the city manager in executing an agreement for city prosecution. Whereas section 238.01 of the Belbrook Municipal Code establishes the office of prosecuting attorney for the city of Belbrook and establishes conditions and qualifications for employment of the prosecuting attorney. Whereas the city of Belbrook has negotiated an agreement with attorney Ronald C. Lewis to be the prosecutor. Whereas the city manager executed the agreement to ensure continuity of prosecution services. Whereas the agreement began on July 1st, 2015, expires on June 30, 2016. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves, section one, that the action of the city manager to execute the attached agreement with Ronald C. Lewis is hereby authorized. And section two, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. And this is just the engagement of our city prosecutor, Ronald C. Lewis, that we've used for a number of years.
Yes.
And it's a rate very similar to what's been prior years.
It's exactly the, virtually the same. The only amendment to the contract is the termination provision, went from a 60 days notice to a 30 days notice. This is a ratification. Normally we adopt this in June or you give the authorization. There was, I was in some conversations with the city of Xenia to potentially change this where we'd actually contract with the city of Xenia to provide these services rather than directly with Mr. Lewis, who is an employee of the city of Xenia. In the end, we had to execute the contract with Mr. Lewis. That may change in the future, but there are some things that have to happen with the city of Xenia before that could happen. So what we did is just basically execute the same contract that we have in the past with that one minor change. He has been our prosecutor since 2006. The police are very satisfied with the services that they provide. He is available to them when they need him, nights, weekends, things of that nature. If they need search warrants, things of that nature, so, or advice on how to handle a case. So we're happy with the services. It was just a matter of who the contract was going to be with was what we were. That's why there was a delay in this and that's why we're seeking approval or ratification of my signature.
Have any citizens ever asked to be involved in this or become the prosecutor to the extent they'd be qualified or?
I have never had anyone contact me about that at all, no. Sometimes the judges are a little particular as to who they want prosecuting cases within their court. They want to have a person that prosecutes. Ron Lewis does it for the city of Xenia, obviously, but also does it for Green County for some of their courses, cases that go to the municipal court. So that's why we've just always kept it this way.
Okay, thanks.
And our last prosecutor is now the county prosecutor.
Yes.
So that's the two I remember for as long as I can remember.
Yeah, exactly.
Back to at least 97 is as far back as Holler was there from at least 97 till 2006.
He also did a great job for us then, too.
Right.
Any other questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt resolution 2015-V?
We'd like to move for the adoption of resolution 2015-V.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
A motion by Mr. Sweller to adopt resolution number 2015-V, ratifying the action of the city manager in executing an agreement for city prosecution, seconded by Mr. Martin. Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird.
Yes. Yes. Moving on, resolution 2015-W. This is going to be a resolution regarding energy optimized, energy efficient lighting services agreement and energy optimizers. I have a working relationship with this company through my full-time job with Vectren, so I'm going to recuse myself and let Deputy Mayor Sweller run this section. We've got enough people here. Is there anyone else on council who would like to also recuse themselves?
I'm also going to recuse myself.
And for someone similar?
Yeah, because I work at DPNL and they're receiving rebate.
Rebates from DPNL. So with that, Deputy Mayor Sweller, I'm going to hand this over and we will evacuate and then come get us when you're done.
So those of us not employed by local employment or the local utilities cannot continue onwards. Resolution number 2015-W, Mr. Martin?
Yes, thank you Deputy Mayor Sweller. Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an energy efficient lighting service agreement with Energy Optimizers USA LLC. Whereas the city desires to replace the existing lighting in its facilities with energy efficient lighting to maximize energy cost savings. And whereas Energy Optimizers USA LLC has provided a proposal to replace the lighting while maintaining the integrity and functionality of the existing systems. And whereas the proposal stipulates a 10-year lighting service agreement with Energy Optimizers that will provide significant savings to the city in the form of lower energy costs. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolve, section one, that the city manager is hereby authorized to execute the attached energy efficient lighting service agreement with Energy Optimizers USA LLC. And section two, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. Mr. Schlaghax?
Yes. We have discussed this at a couple of previous council meetings, but this is an agreement, a 10-year agreement with Energy Optimizers. What that will do is replace all the lighting within all the city facilities with LED lighting. So all the lighting's in the council chambers, police, fire departments, all that. Interior and exterior lights will be replaced with more energy efficient LED lights. Obviously, there are rebates available when that happens. Those will get credited back to Energy Optimizers as part of this deal. What happens is we will have this 10-year service agreement. We will pay $1,466 a month to Energy Optimizers. What we get, the benefit we get is obviously all the infrastructure, the lighting that we're going to get replaced. The service for any of the interior lights, they will, they will provide a supply of those light bulbs to replace. And exterior, they'll provide both the material and labor to replace those lights. The savings from the energy will more than exceed the cost of the service agreement over the time that, of the 10 years. And then once the 10 years are done, all the savings will accrue to us. The life on a LED light bulb is in the 20-year range. So in theory, we should have 20 years without having to change any of these light bulbs and the energy savings we'll get will far outweigh the costs that we're paying. This was reviewed by the finance committee and recommended for approval. And if council approves, we will execute this agreement and get the project underway. The schools are currently going through a very similar project, replacing all their lighting with LED lighting at the present time.
It's a great agreement. It's a great arrangement for us.
Yeah, but Mark, I know we talked about the numbers in depth at a prior meeting. Do you have just sort of a top level in terms of what our projected savings is going to be?
Yes, they provided and they do this based on estimates of usage, which is, you know, that's all you can really do. Let me find it here. It actually increased from the initial, I think in the initial one, we were talking about a $200,000, $220,000. It, over the 20-year cash flow with a 10-year service agreement is $338,000 is what we'll save over the life of these light fixtures.
So I mean, that's, you know, that, this is, this is a significant project in terms of savings. And so I think it's, it's a great thing to do for a lot of reasons.
It's the right thing to do.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's sort of a win-win when it comes to that. I mean, it's the right thing to do environmentally because we are going to be using less energy. But it's also financially for us, it's the right thing to do too.
Right.
So. And an energy optimizer has a proven track record with a number of other government entities of doing this and providing. I contacted several of their references and they had nothing but good things to say about them as a contractor coming in and doing the work.
Excellent.
Good, good. Any more discussion of council? You have a motion for the adoption?
Yes. Deputy Mayor Sweller, I'd like to make a motion for approval of resolution 2015-W.
In a second?
I'll second it. I have a motion by Mr. Martin to approve resolution number 2015-W, authorizing the city manager to enter into an energy efficient lighting service agreement with Energy Optimizers, seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Sweller?
Yes.
This time if we can call back into the meeting, the mayor and councilwoman Seager-Lawson. We will turn the reins back over to you.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor. Moving on, city managers report.
Yes, a couple of items this evening for you. First, earlier this year, we talked, had several discussions about our current cell tower lease that we own or that we have a lease for our property down in the well field. I did review that with the finance committee at our recent meeting. After having participated in some training, some ongoing webinars that were provided, the recommendation that I made to the finance committee and they concurred was to not sell our lease at this time. It didn't make financial sense for a variety of reasons. But in the literature that we reviewed, the training that I participated in, they really said unless there is a financial reason that you need that cash flow immediately, it really doesn't make sense. reason that you need that cash flow immediately, it really doesn't make sense. You're in a better position to keep that lease over a period of time and you'll come out ahead in the long run, which I think we realize, and the compounding factor for us is that we can't invest that money in anything that's really high yielding. If we could go and, not that I'd wanna put it in the stock market, but if you could, you might be able to outperform it, but since we are very limited in what we can do, the earnings we have would not benefit it. So, just to sort of wrap that up with that, we will continue to look at that. If somebody offers us a higher amount of money, we'll continue to look at it, but for the time being, we're gonna just continue on with our cell tower lease arrangement as it is. Anyone who's driven through town here over the past couple of weeks, seeing we've been doing our water main project, they started down crossing Franklin Street, right down there by the funeral home, then they went through the plaza, then they went through the alleys between our buildings over there on Northwest Street, and now they're on North Main Street. They're making good progress. The most difficult part is the part going up the hill on North Main Street. There's a lot of other utilities and things to avoid along the way that they either have to go over or under, things of that nature, but they've been making good progress. And I would imagine, within the next week or two, they'll complete that portion of the actual water main, and then the biggest part left then is the resurfacing of that entire stretch from Franklin all the way up to the North Corp limits there. That may be delayed just because of the weather. I know all the paving companies are being delayed because of the weather conditions, but if we can get, the contractor's done a good job of reopening the street every night. He did the same thing when he was in the plaza. I did not receive any complaints about parking or people not being able to get to certain parts, even in the plaza there with things going on. So, I think they've done a good job of maintaining, allowing people to get through, even with the flagger going up and down the hill. You may have to wait, I've never waited more than thirty seconds before somebody comes through and then you go back through. So, it's, that's part of the reason we did in the summer, not when school was in session because we didn't, the traffic increases exponentially when the school's in session. But, that's coming along well and I think they're on target to meet their deadline of, before school starts, and we should be in good shape with that. Another project that we have now out to bid is the stormwater project on Vemco and Firebird. There is some stormwater work that's going on there. The plans are out. The bid opening for that will be August sixth. My hope is to have a recommendation to council for the August seventeenth council meeting to approve a contract. If we can get a contractor in here, we'd like to have that project done before the paving plants close, so we can have that work done and they can be done before the end of the year. Couple of other items. One, and I mentioned this in my memo to you, the Miami Valley Risk Management Association, that's the pool that the city belongs to for property and liability insurance. We're one of twenty cities that are in that pool. On an annual basis, they give out awards to communities and they have a standard of excellence award, and what that is, is for any community that has less than one hundred dollars of losses for every full-time employee. So, for two thousand and fourteen, the city had less than fifty dollars of losses for every full-time employee. When you think about that, for us, we have thirty-three full-time employees, so that's less than, to get the award, you'd have to have less than thirty-three hundred dollars in claim. That would mean, that's one car accident, that's one.
One anything.
One anything would cost you thirty-three hundred dollars. So, I think it says a lot about the care that our employees take in what they do. They drive a lot of miles, they're out in a lot of different situations, whether it's plowing the streets or responding to emergency calls. So, I think that says a lot about our employees and they will be recognized for their part of earning that award. Last thing I have is, our police department has come across a, let me pull it up here. There's a website where we can actually put some information out. Hopefully, it's still up here. And this is called Raids Online, and what this allows, and this is, we can actually put our crime data on this map, and you can sort of map and see what crimes have occurred. I know we put out the Crime Watch on a weekly basis, but this is just another visual way to look at this, and for any of these little flags, you can, you can click on it and it will pull up, and I can't read it from this angle, but it'll tell you what the crime is, when it occurred. It won't give you the specific address, but it'll tell you like what block of the street it's in and things like that, and it'll tell you those different things. We just, we are, we would like to implement this and just as another way to allow people to sort of see what's going on in their neighborhood and things like that. If I scroll back a little bit here, you can see that the other agencies in the area that use it are the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department and the city of Dayton. And if I scroll back far enough, and then obviously down in Cincinnati, you can see there's other agencies, but if I, I was doing this earlier, as you could, this is city of Dayton and things like that. So, there's, there's a whole lot more going on there than you're ever going to see here in Belbrook. But, again, I think it's just something that I, we can choose how long these stay out there, but I think we, we put them out there for like a three-month period, so you can sort of track whether you're moving to this community, whether you wanna know what's going on and things going on in your neighborhood, you can, you can do that, so.
Mark, what is the website again?
Raids, R-A-I-D-S online dot com. The other nice thing that I've signed up for, you can, you plug in your home address and then you can have them send you an alert as often as you want, but I've chose a weekly alert and said, okay, any crimes within a certain mile radius, they'll give you an, send you an email with a summary of all the crimes that occurred within that area. So, if you want it really narrow, if you just wanna see your neighborhood, or if you wanna expand it out, you can see larger things. So, I think this is something that we would like to continue to do, and it's just, again, just more information to provide to our residents if they have an interest in that. And I think over time, it's a service that's free. All we have to do is, is put the information into the system and we handle that on a weekly basis and put that information out there, and then it shows up and people can see what's going on.
Mark, what does it take to put that in? I mean, are we able to feed this with an automated report, or?
Not, not at the present time. It's hand injury, but because of the amount of calls we have, that's not, that's not a burden to us at this point. Maybe over time, if we wanted to, we can look at automating that process, but right now, it's, it's just as easy, rather than paying to set up that mapping, it's easier for us just to, just to enter the information.
I mean, realistically, you're probably only looking at three or four things, maybe.
Right, on a weekly basis, yeah, I mean, it may, you know.
That would be reported on air.
Five to ten, probably, that, because we're, you know, we're not putting traffic tickets or written warnings.
Right, right.
We're just putting, really, a lot of these are thefts, burglaries, that type of thing.
Sure.
So, we can choose what we put up there, and so we control that. This isn't somebody coming in and looking at our reports and putting things up. It's stuff that we, that we can, we control. So, if anyone wants to log in and see that there, they can see what, what happens in their community on a, on a regular basis and have a little better feel for that. And then, the only other thing that I have this evening is that our next meeting is on Monday, August seventeenth, which is not a normal meeting night, that's actually the third Monday of August, but because of conflicting schedules and our summer schedule, we're meeting on Monday, August seventeenth, the next, for the next meeting. That is all I have this evening.
Does anyone have any questions for our city manager this evening?
Mark, how does a city like Dayton enter information in that Raids Online? Do they have an automated system?
I'm assuming that they probably have an automated system where they can, they can download that data and feed it in there, right out of their system. And we probably have that ability and that may be something we look at over time, but for the time being, it's, at least as we were experimenting with it, it was easy enough just to enter.
Do you have guidelines about what you put out there versus what you don't? I mean, you said we're not doing traffic tickets.
We're not doing traffic tickets, we're not doing domestic violence, we're not doing juvenile offenses, things of that nature. So, yeah, we, the police department have an internal list of what they, what they put out there, similar to what they, there are certain things they don't put on that Crime Watch report also, because it's not, not really for public consumption. Technically, a public record, but we're not going to put it out there.
Right. Good.
Any other questions for our city manager?
Thank you, Mark.
Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. Service?
Nothing tonight.
Safety?
Yes, Mayor, this Wednesday at seven PM, police have been giving their seminar on active shooter preparedness. I went to the first one. It's very informative and they do a good job presenting it. Probably lasted maybe an hour or so. We have the community church and it's something worth seeing.
And essentially, I believe it's what your response would be if an active shooter came into your place of work or some other place, 'cause sometimes when you say active shooter, it can be a little, what are you actually talking about? But, yeah, it sounds like very good training.
It is. That's all, Governor.
Uh, thank you very much. Finance and audit?
Mayor, just got a few comments on the financial report that the city manager produced on, or based on June thirtieth information. It looks like we're tracking very closely to our budget, and a couple of things are down. Water fees, I noticed, are down a little bit this year, though we had a lot last year, and we've got a couple developments coming online sooner, but it seems like our expenses are down and our revenue's down a little bit, so we're tracking pretty good over last year, and I think we're doing a good job of budgeting. I also was happy to see that the capital projects seem to be tracking very close as well, so good job on the budget and as long as we stay close to it, we're doing the right stuff.
Yes, thank you.
Looks good.
Anything else?
That's it, Mayor.
Community affairs, I think we have one item on that list this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The community affairs committee met and interviewed Jennifer Bowersock, an applicant to the Village Review Board, and we are recommending her appointment for the term that expires January thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen.
Any questions on council before we make a motion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to recommend appoint of Jennifer Bowersock to Village Review Board to fill an unexpired term that expires January thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen?
That recommendation actually constitutes a motion, so.
Okay, may I have a second?
Consider it done.
I'll second.
The motion by Mrs. Middlestutter to appoint Jennifer Bowersock to the Village Review Board to fill an unexpired term expiring January thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
And Mayor Baer.
Yes. Moving on, old business. Anyone on council have any old business this evening?
I guess I sort of have old business. I think we talked about this a couple of different times, but the number one question that I get from their parents when I'm sitting at Second Right, watching football games, soccer games, baseball games, is how come we don't have permanent facilities down there? And I guess my initial reaction was, I think that's a park district issue, so I contacted the park district and said, hey, do you have any plans to put, you know, permanent restroom facilities down there or run water down there? And they said, no, that, the strip of land that is at Second Right that currently has the concession stand on it is actually owned by the city, so if the city is willing to do that, then we're willing to do that, basically is the response that I got. And then I contacted Mark and he said, well, you know, it's on top of all the well fields, and so there's a sanitation issue if you're in a sanitary sewer there. I guess what I'm asking for is, could we have some sort of a committee that says, okay, well, then maybe that's not the right spot, but is there some other spot within Second Right, whether that's up on the hill, or maybe we can partner with either Sugar Creek or with the school districts to kind of put it, it may not be the optimal place, but if it's, if there's an issue with sanitary sewers in that area, then maybe we put it somewhere else. Maybe we put it up on the hill over by Eagle Land or something like that. And I guess what I'm asking is, could we have some sort of a committee that just kind of gets together and says, can we figure something out?
Yeah, my concern is the location of the wells and really to have anything within three hundred feet of that well and you're sitting on that aquifer, and anytime we do that, obviously, there is sanitary sewer at the schools and over on Brookwood and things that are adjacent to that. If we tied into an existing sanitary sewer without running anything new, I suppose that would be something different, but I would, I don't think, I would wanna recommend anything that would require putting a new sanitary sewer through that. We have eight wells within that field. People don't know that those wells are there and we don't advertise that they're there, but they're all throughout that park, particularly in that land. That's why that land has never been turned over to the park district, because we want, we want control of that land and we don't want somebody to be able to do something without our say or just come in and build something, or even to the point of putting pesticides, things of that nature on there. We control all that, and that's why we wanna maintain that control. So, I suppose if there was something that, that it could be tied or used as part of the existing school buildings that are over there or something like that, maybe, but I, the reaction that I got from both the service director and then he contacted the EPA just to get their take on what it would take to do that, and they, they said whatever it would take, they would highly recommend that you don't put any, any sanitary sewers through your well fields.
Now, there, there are, I completely agree. There are potential, I don't know, I know Mike's been out to Sugar Valley, and they have got, do they have water out there?
Uh, I do not know that.
Do they have water out there, you know?
Out where?
At the soccer fields.
On the hill, I think they do.
Yeah.
At Second Right you're talking about? Oh, at Second Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, what I'm saying is, potentials, if you have been to Sugar Valley lately, after the two fires, they have a very nice, it's technically mobile, but it's all self-contained, air-conditioned, everything, and it does need a water supply, but it is not, it's all tanked, it's not, now, which may still be a concern for the well field, having, you know, and that may not work, but, I mean, it's all sealed. So, I, I think, I don't have an issue with people talking about it. I think at the end of the day, it's, it's really, you know, the city's not gonna pay for it.
Right.
It's a park district and they've always had issues, obviously spending capital dollars on property that they don't own, so hence we gave them Patricus and Bel Brock Park a few years back, but.
Right, but there's, there's some land that I understand is owned by the school district that is part of right next Eagle Land, where Eagle Land is, and so perhaps if it's up on the hill and therefore it's not in, you know, I think there was some concern also about being in the flood plain.
Flood plain, right, you wouldn't want it down there 'cause it just, especially something like this would just split away.
That's the problem, it would have to be outside the flood plain, 'cause you can't have something in the flood plain that, that then can have waste.
But I think, you know, if us and the township and the school district all get together and try to figure out where could we possibly go without damaging the water system, without causing other concerns, it just seems like, there's enough people that go down there that I'm sure they would donate to that cause, because, I mean, I get that question twice a week, probably.
Yeah, I understand.
Are there porta potty?
There's porta potties down there, yeah.
Porta potty now.
Right.
Yeah.
And that one may be better to.
Not that this is a design committee, but, you know, I mean, another option I, that I just came to my mind as you were talking, Donna, was that area, and I think it's wooded right now, but it's up by the little restaurant, up by the old Frosty Eagle, right? I mean, they obviously have running water and sanitation there.
Right.
You know, maybe that's a, who knows, maybe that's a possibility as well.
Yeah.
But I, but I, I agree with you. I think having a committee made up of, you know, concerned citizens, but also representation from all the different groups that have a, that have a stake in this, makes sense to look at it. And to your point, even if, even if we decide we can't do anything different, at least we've reviewed it.
Right.
And we've investigated it and researched it, and we all have an answer and we all understand the answer.
Right. So, I don't know what it takes to do that. I'm willing to volunteer for that committee, I'm willing to make phone calls, I'm willing to meet with people, whatever, however best it is to.
Well, I think you'd be the city's representative now, you need concerned citizens and Mr. Stewart and probably maybe even, you know, the township, a lot of people would use that as well as Belbrook.
It's, it's in the township. I mean, it's city.
It is, it is.
It's in the township.
We just have to own it.
City of that one strip of land that's the, closest to the, to the street.
Yeah.
Right.
But it's in the township. It's not city, it is not in the city of Belbrook.
Right.
It's not inside the city limits.
It's in Sugar Creek Township.
Correct. It is in Sugar Creek Township, even though we.
We own the land. We own the land because of the well field.
And it's the same as the other.
On the backside of the driving range.
The driving range. We own that, but it's in the township.
Okay.
So, the township would have to be involved, too, 'cause they, we wouldn't do any permitting, it'd all be Green County and.
I guess, a committee, I'm not sure that a committee is necessary, I mean, I think we, I don't doubt that there's any desire to have it. I mean, so, when I think of committee, I think of, talk around, I think it's probably just a conversation that I can start with Jeff Stewart and say, okay, and maybe it's the schools and maybe it's the township, too, but to say, okay, where are possibilities of options to have this? I mean, I think the, the need, there's no doubt that there's a need, it's just the restrictions I mean, I think the, the need, there's no doubt that there's a need, it's just the restrictions are, okay, we wanna protect our water source at all costs, so is there, is there a place that we could put this? And that may be on school land, that could be on park district land, could be on city land, is, is there a place that we could put this that could accommodate that? So I don't know that if we put a committee together, everyone's going to agree that there's a need for it because of the volume of people that are down there and a permanent restroom facility would help that. So, so I guess maybe initially, let me reach out to Jeff Stewart, I know you've talked to him, but maybe we can, and get Dale involved and we can sort of look at what, what if any options we have. And it may involve Green County sanitary engineering too to say, okay, where are the existing sanitary laterals and where do they go? I mean, there's a, what, you couldn't tap into it, but there's a big one that goes through that park because it goes from where the old treatment facility was to the new one down, down the, down the way there. So let me start there and then we can sort of maybe see where it goes from there.
Okay.
And then we can come back with options or do something.
Okay, and I'm happy to do whatever, attend meetings or whatever you want.
That pump, old pumping station, that's not flood zone there where the generator is?
No, it's not, 'cause it, I mean, it sits up high enough.
It's above it.
Right, right.
That might be possible.
Yeah, I mean, then you get into.
That's quite a hike.
Right, how close, you know, where, where do you want it to be so that people still use it?
Still use it, right.
That it's convenient for them to be used, but I'll, I'll start with the park district and I'm sure they've looked at something along the way.
Right.
See what our options are.
Okay.
Any other old business? We'll move on to any new business. Seeing none, we'll move open, on to open discussion.
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor.
Oh, Mayor.
Nothing, Mayor?
Nope, nothing here.
Lots to know, lots to know.
Well, tonight, we had a fair amount of legislation on the agenda and I just wanted to compliment the city manager and city staff. We have not had any emergency ordinances in a long time and that means we're forward-thinking and we're like probably 90 days out because we've gotta wait until it's effective and always the timeline gets to be kind of tight. So just something I was kind of looking at and thinking about tonight and I thought, you know, we haven't seen one of those in a while, so good job, Mark, and good job for the staff.
Yeah, that's, that's my goal, not you. I mean, there will be a time that we'll need to do that, but I try to avoid it.
And if you read the definition, it's very specific stuff and I think sometimes we've kind of crossed the line a little bit and got right in the middle, but I mean, I think we're really staying ahead of the game right now, it's appreciated.
That's my goal.
Thanks.
Anything else on council?